Welcome everybody. If you're watching this, you're watching the Halifax Board of Selectments meeting for October 10th, 2017. Our regular Tuesday night meeting. As always, we are being filmed by Area 58 Community Access Television. You can watch this, if you want, on Community Access Television stations or YouTube. We will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think we're up for an Emmy. Just a second.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I noted nobody took any.
Why do you want to go there?
All right. I didn't, but I couldn't resist. We're going to start with the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance?
Yep, I'll make my motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have warrants.
I would like would move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments, bills. Payroll warrant number 28 for $354,553.39. Venda warrant number 29, $70,512.31. A withholding warrant number 30 for $141,859.29. And school warrant number 31 for $390,771.32. The Amalans' commitment 9C, $21,669. Amalans' commitment number 9D for $32,946. And payable to Halifax Postmaster, $196. I'm assuming that's for stamps.
I will make the second, but I will adjust the withholding warrant to reflect 24 cents as the ending of the document.
Oh, did I miss it? Sorry about that. All those in f- or...
Yeah.
You seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Venda warrant number 32 for $365,660.18. Mobile park fee number 10 for $5,160.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And I will move to approve the Selectments bills for October 10th, 2017. Office expense account, machine expense account, WB Mason Incorporated, $61.97. Law account, Attorney Lawrence Mayo, PC, $350. Law account, Matthew Bender and Company Incorporated, mass law books and subscription, $249.10. And the last piece, law account, Douche Williams and Brooks, D'Renzo and Holland, PC, aggregate total of $2,619.93. That completes the question.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. We're going to move on to General Mayor.
Yes. 7:35.
Oh, we're going to start with...well, okay. 7:35. I thought it was 7:45. All right. Scheduled appointments. Candace Niffen, Flower Chau.
Well, I'm really just here to...I have a couple of questions that are things I just need to clarify. And then I want to just tell you, I want to ask you a question. And you've seen the stone, that was one thing I wanted to point out, and the garden. Tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with the Civil Lake, the head of Horticulture Department, Civil Lake, and he's bringing students out to see the garden at this, the point that it's at now. And what he's really, what we're really going to be talking about is, is if there's some way that we can collaborate that falls within their curriculum. We're not really looking, or it's not reasonable for us to ask them to come and weed the garden or take care of the garden. But that is something we're going to have to deal with at some point, somehow. And one of the things that I wanted to just see if it was okay to do this is, we have established a gift account, and then of course, the Beautification Committee has been involved with this. And I was wondering if there would be a problem if we talked about improving or changing some of the plantings along the foundation of the town hall, right out here, like digging, just improving upon it, making it, see what they have to suggest. And I don't know if that falls within the Beautification Committee, or the, it would be fine? Okay. That's one thing I thought might, you know, if they could help with design and...
Incorporate it into the garden.
It might, and it, well, I don't know.
Not into it, but at least complement.
But it would all look good.
Yes, because I was noticing the plants that are right here in the corners.
Haven't been pruned or anything.
There's work that needs to be done there. You know, I mean, we can't just ask them to do labor, but they might be able to help us design some improvements. I don't know, because I've never looked at it, but that's what we're going to be talking about.
The Horticulture Class, you know, heads-on experience, a lot of them, they get take jobs in garden shops.
Oh, absolutely.
So this is no different than doing that.
Right, but they also have a curriculum left to follow. So, you know, I had, I had written to them last spring, and I threw out some ideas, but at that point, the garden went in the NMA, they're finishing the school year, and then summer camp. So this is really the first opportunity we kind of get together. So that's good, because I'll talk to him about the area, the area. And then the other, another question that I had, I'll put my glasses on here. Oh, I still have some questions about acknowledgement letters. We established garden gift accounts so that people could make tax-deductible contributions to the long-term maintenance or improvement or expansion of this garden. And we've gotten several donations, and I've written letters to them from the Beautification Committee, but I think, try, I think for tax purposes, we're both supposed to...
No. I talked to Sandy about that. Any committee or department can accept a monetary gift of any size.
Okay.
And it's material goods at the Board Selectment. Now, having said that, the Board has indicated an interest, let's say, over $200, or, you know, we could pick a number and say, if we're going to get a donation, whether it's from a private individual or a nonprofit, whatever, for the garden, the Board likes to know that over a certain size, so we can send its own letter. But it has nothing to do, as long as the letter goes out from somebody, that's all that's needed, so whether it's a Beautification Committee or from the Board. And mind you, if the committee wants, even for a smaller amount, if the committee would like the Board to send a letter, I'm sure the Board will, you know, will sign, will do that without any problem.
Okay. That's where I think I was a little confused. Then should, do you have a list of who, who we received donations?
I can get one from...
I have one. I didn't know if you wanted me to get it to you.
Well, yeah. Are you asking for the Board to do letters for everybody, or...
Well, I don't know. That's, I'm happy to do the letters. I just didn't, I think when I talked to Sandy, we weren't sure if that would suffice tax purposes.
Yes, it would. Yes.
Okay. So, so what I did is, at the end of the letters, the four that I've sent out so far, I copied off some donation I made, the thing that said, you know, "Consider this your receipt for town." And that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. And I will continue to do that.
Thank you.
And I'll just assume that Sandy will tell you who donated.
I can do that. Okay.
Okay. And then my next question is just about the administration of the gift account. I know it was established, I'm not sure how that, like, does, is, is it the Beautification Committee that approves expenditures from that account?
Yes. And, but then the Board Selectment still needs to sign off.
Okay.
Just that we sign off of...
Like, like any bill, or?
Any warrant, yeah.
Okay. But if you're going to add anything more to the garden, then this Board would need to look at the overall design.
Oh, of course, of course, like you did the first time. Yeah. And that would be true if we wanted to put it again, sure. Yeah. Okay. All right. My last question about that is, if we, if we, I'm a little concerned that we're going to have to do some, actually, I think I might have spoken to you about it, and then I started doing it myself. But I think we're going to need to hire either a company to come in and do annual maintenance. And I, I'm not asking about that now, because I don't have any crisis in mind. We're okay so far. But I wondered, that doesn't preclude using Beautification Committee money if we have a gift account.
Either could be used for this purpose.
Okay. That's all I have.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Thank you, and your credit for all the work.
I feel like I have everything figured out.
Yay!
You had it figured out before you asked, so you're up.
And I have these letters written that I didn't do as soon as, so now I can say.
Candace, you've already been the first. You never ask, of course, unless you know the answer.
But I know, it's been a while. And now, but you can... Things change, so, thank you very much.
No, no, thank you. Garden. It's 7:40. We're five minutes from our next, so we could probably do a couple things.
Sure. Thank you.
So, Police Department, so will serviceless, the Board needs to rescind its vote terminating permanent intermittent patrol officer Jennifer Keegan's inclusion in the Police Department. This will allow her to request a waiver to continue as a permanent intermittent officer, but would forego her right to apply for a full-time position.
So I will make a motion that we rescind the vote of two weeks ago.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous.
Recycling Grant needs Tom to be the signatory for it. This is the, just the form itself.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Tom to sign the Recycling Grant.
So you're saying, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The Treasure Collector, just wanting you to know that we have, she started the foreclosure procedures on 18 properties, most of which are $30,000 or more in arrears in terms of property taxes. There's no action for the Board to take, but she wanted you to be aware of it, that's all. The 7-Eleven Tedeschi Stores looking to put a keynote monitor in the store. Valire Commission sends us a notice about that. Unless there's any reason that the Board doesn't want it there, there's no action for the Board to take. There's a 21-day comment period. I mean, obviously, they're all over the place in Halifax, along with any number of other communities, so I assume the Board has no...
They already have lottery there.
Just, we had received, as a creditor, we had received notice from the bankruptcy court in North Carolina, bankruptcy petition filed by Benjamin John Cordell. I believe he owns property over in Lydon Lane. The taxes are paid up and everything, except for the recycling fee. I checked with Larry about this. At this point, he said, just don't do anything. If we get past November 1st, and the half-year payment has been made, then he thinks it would be wise for us to take action. But for the moment, I'll just let this sit until the beginning of November. Now, there are signatory authorities for the Building Department and Regulatory Department of, I guess I'm the alternate in case Rob is not available. All the Board needs to do in this case is approve it, but also their signatures down at the bottom for all three of you.
Okay, make a motion that we authorize Charlie to be the alternate payroll signer when we want Charlie as a member.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Kathy Dryan, the Board Health Agent, sent out an invite to our departments and those in neighboring towns that deal with rabies issues and situations. Catherine Brown from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is going to be doing a train workshop a few Fridays from now, on the 27th, up in the Great Hall at 9:00. There's no action for the Board to take, but I wanted the Board to know that that was going on.
In case you need to bring me for my reports.
Right. Or, you know, for that matter. Pam sees me frothing at the mouth. Of course, you get to Halloween, you never know. Beautification Committee, we already talked about. Gifts, we talked about. Open meeting laws. The HE's office had revised a number of the regulations. The only crucial one for the town, really, in my mind, is simply the minutes have to be done and approved under specific timetable, 30 days or three meetings after that meeting, whichever comes last. So, for instance, a Board that doesn't meet more than a couple times a year, you can wait, but one that meets on a frequent basis, you'll have to do, you'll have to, by instance, keep up with the minutes, so...
We know who you are.
Yes.
Yes, no, you are, without the doggy earnings.
Fitzgerald Garden, we talked about open laws, we talked about stop signs and speed limit signs. Now, I mean, we had, I don't know if there's anybody here about that.
Laurel Street, you're here.
Laurel Street and Circuit Street. We didn't have a specific time about this. I didn't know if the Board wanted to wait, because it might take a few minutes.
Until after the 7:00.
Yeah. Do the 7:45, we'll do that, and then back.
Where we're now at, 7:45.
So fuel storage permits. The Board's holding four revocation hearings tonight. Two Cumberland Farms for their property of the northeast corner of Plymouth Street and Montponton Street, and the Nazarela property over in Summit Street. They've indicated they're specifically declining to renew these, but we need to go through the formal process of holding the hearing tonight and revoking the permits, in this case for non-payment. Let me do those two first, if the Board want, would want to approve revoking those two fuel storage permits.
Yes. So do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Remind me that, I don't want to...
Yes, one would be Cumberland Farms for the corner of Montponton and Plymouth Streets, the northeast corner, and then the other would be the Nazarela property on Summit Street.
Okay, so moved.
Second. All those in favor? All right. Unanimous.
So on the other two, one is for Davis Automotive. They are in, on schedule for their payment plan for the real estate taxes. The concern is that there have been no payments towards the amount of money owed for the motor vehicle excise tax. So they've been making some progress. They have a payment plan, they're working with the Treasure Collector on that. There's no payment plan for the motor vehicle. And I don't know, you know, there's a few possibilities here. One is the Board could decide to postpone taking any action, so that the permit holder could meet again with the Treasure Collector and work out a payment plan for, along with the real estate, to do the motor vehicle. And the Board could continue this hearing from a couple weeks from now.
Well, they've done half, half of what they're supposed to be involved in, as part of taxes, got a plan.
They have a plan for the real estate. They don't have a...
My recommendation would be that we hold off until such time as she speaks with the Treasure and find out whether or not that can be worked out.
Okay.
Is that a second?
Yes.
I want to call you. Is it Mr. Tobin? Is that where he handles it?
No, you would be talking to, oh, for the excise.
Yes, it's probably going to the deputies.
Okay. So that's a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And for the Country Club property, the Country Club is not in arrears itself, but its interests are in that there are a number of properties owned by the...
Thank you, Claudia.
...interested in, by the owners of the Country Club. Their taxes probably mounting to close to $50,000 in various properties in town that are in arrears. Given that the Board had voted just now to give Davis Automotive a couple weeks to try and work out a payment plan, what I'm recommending is that the Board do the same for this, and I will contact the Country Club, indicate which properties are still in arrears and that they need to work out a payment plan with the Treasure Collector for those.
So we, one thing I didn't say, I hope to set a question in the room, is that we were receiving something in writing from those particular agencies stating that they have...
Yes. They've started, need them arranged, yes.
And I know that, you know, obviously, with Stephanie, we've been in touch and she been on a payment plan. Has anybody been in touch with the PACs lately?
Well, they were in touch, they were in touch during the revocation hearing. They may not realize that, under the state law, that all properties, not just the Country Club itself, have to be in good standing.
Okay, so they're not aware?
I don't know. Well, they may, in this particular case, they may not be aware of. We've had similar situations with them before. This is not a new situation for them.
Have we sent something out to them stating that these things need to be caught up?
Yeah. But what I'm recommending, another, wait another two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
I think that's right. I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
And Pam, what we'll do is continue the hearing to 7:35, two weeks from now, on the 24th. I don't think it's going to be that long. I think it'll take five minutes or so. Either we'll have payment plans in place with the Treasure Collector tomorrow. Are you caught up?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah.
Okay.
We still have 10 minutes before the next hearing.
So when we go to Laurel and Circuit. So, the situation with Laurel and Circuit is that we had a number of residents who indicated an interest in having stop signs placed at the intersection of Laurel and Circuit. It's a four-way intersection. Circuit dives in and then dives back on the Plymouth Street. Laurel comes in at an angle and continues over to the Bridgewater's. But there's an intersect, four-way intersection there without any stop signs, stop lines, anything like that. In addition, the residents had indicated an interest in getting speed limit signs. Under current state law, you could put up thickly settled signs, and we've, back before last year, we had done modified signs that said thickly settled and 30 miles per hour. The residents have indicated an interest now that the state law has been, was passed last year under the Municipal Modernization Act, allows cities and towns to lower the speed limit in thickly settled sections of a community from 30 to 25. And there are specific signs now that have been developed by Massachusetts that say that.
Without having to do the whole testing?
We won't have to do the test or anything like that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Now, cities and towns can decide to do it on a blanket basis, they can, or they can decide to pick particular streets. They're about, out of 351, there are about a dozen, a few more than that, who have done it citywide. And there was, and really, those are very large cities, there's almost no rural communities that have done it that way. There are two communities that have done it on a piecemeal basis. This particular street is a 25, or this particular street. There's nothing preventing the town through the Board Selectmen from doing the same thing. The, a couple things happened after the residents indicated an interest. One, the Traffic Safety Committee met, they indicated that they're, at that time, we weren't talking about the 25, but they certainly were recommending putting the stop signs in, both at the intersection, but also at the corners where Circuit and Laurel go back into the southern, end of Plymouth Street, the southern side of Plymouth Street. And also, they were recommending the thickly settled. I did send a note out to all the residents on Laurel and on Circuit, indicating what the Board was considering. At that point, again, I didn't mention the 25, but I got correspondence back asking about it, and went back to the additional research, so the Board could say file but thickly settled 30, or could say thickly settled 25. We received a number of pieces of correspondence from people. Let's see if I can, if I thought I typed these in.
No, you did a nice track on your notes.
Yeah. So...
You know, a couple people like the managers are out of town, so they couldn't make a meeting.
Right. So, Ken Carroll Lynn Vinton are in favor of everything, including the 25 mile per hour zone. Stefan Gelphy is in, if I mispronounce his name, I'm sorry, is in favor of everything, including the 25 miles per hour. Chris Winowitz is also in favor of everything, including the 25. Eugene Lizinski is in favor of all the stop signs. He didn't mention the speed limit. Christine and Philip Salvatore are in favor of the stop signs and speed limits, but did not mention the 30 miles per hour versus 25. Not that everybody knew about that as a possibility, that's one of the things that happened. As I mentioned, the Traffic Safety Committee's recommending both, but they didn't know about the 25. And there may be people who already wrote in or coming in without saying comments, and the Board may want to hear from them.
I'm perfect, I did have a brief conversation with the chief, the police chief, and he's in favor of the 25 as well. And I think that's been the consensus among the neighbors, so I'm perfectly happy to support the 25.
Do we have anybody here from the street that wants to speak to it?
We have, we have two, two individuals. I know there's two right there.
Philip Salvatore, 45, Laurel Street. I'm in favor of the 25. Because, you know, a lot of people, both those are busy streets, you got a lot of people that come from out of the neighborhood that come in, a lot of people that go four-wheeling down by the power lines. And it is ones that pretty much are wreaking the havoc, and, you know, and then some, you know, some skiers from the neighborhood too. But, you know, there are little kids all scattered throughout the neighborhood, so the thickly settled 25 miles an hour would be ideal.
Signs in and of themselves are questionable, but it does give law enforcement another tool to use.
That's basically what I was going to say, is that, you know, the signs are good, but it's like anything that you put on the highway, unless you got some enforcement there.
Yeah.
You know, and so it's got to be diligence on your part, and if you see something happening, to make sure to notify the Police Department, so they, hopefully, can stay on top of it.
I have no issue supporting this.
I'll make a motion.
Is there anybody else here? Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone else want to...
We have Circuit Street in the back.
Gene Lizinski, 110 Circuit Street. You guys set it off. You've got all the bases covered.
That's what we tried for. Who's on, who's on second?
I will make a motion that we approve that 25 miles thickly...
Thickly settled, and stop sign.
Thickly, yes, and the four-way stop sign.
Now, is that, is that on the law? Can we, we can make that the citizens tonight?
Yes. And so it's this, so first of all, stop signs at the four-way intersection.
Yes.
Second, we'll have signage and a traffic rule, in essence, for 25 miles per hour for these two streets. On the southern side of Plymouth Street, this one extends to the Circuit Street, on the northern side, just on the southern side. And then third, stop signs where Circuit Street and Laurel Street intersect, with Plymouth Street on the southern side of both.
Now, has anyone spoken to the Highway Survey?
He was in, he was part of that.
So he's in agreement with this, he understands.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Is that seconded?
Gene has a question.
The stop signs at both ends of the streets going out to 106, it's, the town wanted to save money. It's a no-brainer. Nobody's going to go instantly out on the 106.
Yeah, but we'll do it anyway.
Okay, let it be known, I tried to save money.
All right, Gene, send it down.
You don't get a rebate for that. There'll be a special...
I want signage.
Send it down, Gene.
There'll be a special notification in the newspaper that stop is S-T-O-P, and that scared tires on pavement.
All right, that's the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for making our night lovely.
We love having visitors, if you're not busy, then...
Hang on. Or come back on a night that's more interesting.
Run like the wind, Buller. But don't go more than 25 on that street. I am now watching you.
Hey, speak of the devil, he will appear.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Pleasure making your acquaintance.
So we'll knock on a couple more before Steve's appointment. Land Use Council, three firms that indicated an interest, Mayaris and Harrington, Koppelman and Page, and Deutsch Williams. I didn't know what the Board's preference was to whether to have a special meeting, daytime, nighttime, or conduct this at the regular meeting on the 24th. I'd rather do it different than at a meeting. I'm not even sure I want them all day on the same day.
Really? Oh.
Your call. Me personally, I'd like to do it during the day, I think, but at a, at a special meeting, as opposed to a regular scheduled meeting, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, or what their schedule allows for.
Well, I mean, it's something that is a serious note, we need to concentrate on it. It sounds like it's an idea, just that it's the only subject matter.
Steph. I would recommend that you leave a couple of hours at a time. There's 30 minutes per interview, we'll have a little break between...
Yeah, right. Yeah.
My Tuesday's kind of busy.
Doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I know you're jetting all over.
No, no, no. I have lunch with my parents, and I have, you know, a couple dentist appointments due with them.
Bring them along.
Huh? That'd be fun.
What is a good day? You want to give them some notice, too. So, what do you think, a couple weeks?
Monday is, oh, all right. Oh, do you want to wait a couple weeks?
No, well, no, because I mean, whether we're...
Yeah, let's get it done.
I don't know how yours is.
Next week would be good. Wednesday, is Wednesday still bad for you, or you...
As long as it's after 9 o'clock in the morning, I'm good, because I got to put the kids on the bus.
I can do Wednesday from 11 to 3.
Well, I do the same thing, so 9 o'clock's the earliest I can get to.
I have a dentist appointment at 10:00.
But that's not going to work.
No, no, but we could meet at 11:00, because they just fixed that.
I thought you were going to say you could meet at the dentist's.
Yeah. We can meet at 11:00, and then I have to leave here at 3:30.
That's fine.
Yeah.
If that works, we'll...
On Wednesday at 11:00? Is that kind of stinky because of lunch?
Oh, we have a school...
Do you want to do...
No.
Oh, because you have a school meeting till 11:00. Do you want to do...
It shouldn't be that long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's at 9:30.
Will that mess up lunch? Like, do we want to do one, and then have a lunch break?
You'll just have to sit here, just, I'll just sit in the back and shop.
Well, Charlie...
The only thing, okay, for next week, we may, we may need to use the Great Hall, have the auditors go up there, because the auditors are going to be here next week, using the Selectments meeting. Pick another day?
Is Monday too?
No, they're here the whole week.
Is Monday too early?
No, but they're here all week. So it's, all I need to do is find space. So if we're starting at 11:00 and finishing at 1:00, we just, council on agings using the Great Hall at 1:30, so we should be fine.
Do you think the two hours is enough time?
No, because I think you're going to spend... No, because I think you're going to spend maybe a half an hour with each firm, you're going to leave a little break in between and if you feel that you need to discuss it, well, that still have some time to war. And that, I mean, you may just want to sit back and say, okay, fine, we'll talk about this again on the twenty-fourth at the regular meeting and make a decision.
Sounds like a plan.
So, the eighteenth?
Yes, at eleven.
Okay.
Do you want to do eleven thirty?
The eighteenth on Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
You got something?
Yeah, wrote it.
Do you want to go at one? Do you want to start at one and be done at three?
Yeah, well, you know, my, my whole...
Or Friday.
Outlook on this is that, they're all lawyers, they all do land, but what's, what's the big bang for our buck?
A lot of its personality, a lot of it's how comfortable we are.
Well, Friday, how about Friday the twentieth?
Friday, I now have a month past meeting, not the month past meeting, but just, just next Monday, just do it Monday. The eighteenth?
Yeah, and then the auditors are gone too and we can meet.
Well, okay, the twenty-third. The auditors are going to be here from sixteen to twenty.
Yes, we can do Monday the twenty-third.
Sounds like a plan.
It gives them plenty of time.
What time do you want to do?
Well, do you want to do nine, do you want to do ten?
Monday, as long as it's, I could say after nine o'clock, because it's three days we could do that.
If you do ten, that gives them a chance to come down from Boston, they're all coming from Boston, so let's do that.
So, Monday the twenty-third at ten AM?
That works. Maybe.
Yeah.
And you want to give a half an hour for each of those?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we can sleep one.
I know how they walk and come in the room, they may last five seconds.
Hopefully, right?
Yeah. Personal appearance is always a subject.
Well, then they're going to do opening statements and then they're going to do closing statements.
Well, most of us have some familiarity with them.
Well, the matching.
Oh, yeah, at least two of the firms.
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-third, ten o'clock. I'm good with that.
It's a date.
We don't need a motion for that, do we? You're telling me what to do.
It's eight o'clock.
It's once.
That's, that's pretty rare, Charlie, that's pretty rare.
It's amazing, even once.
Most of the time, he's making us feel like we're telling him, but he's really telling us to tell him.
Tell me, tell, tell everybody that, go ahead, Kim, thank you very much.
No, 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 that's true.
My secret is out.
Oh, no, Charlie.
It was never a secret, she knew it.
I know, right? She didn't know that I was making them think that.
We're in right along. Mr. Hayward is here.
Yay!
Eight o'clock.
Yay!
Mr. Hayward, come on down the front here.
I loved all the pictures you brought.
Because there are two things that are sort of like potholes and cremation.
You gave us a lot of great pictures.
They made a mistake, they made a mistake on your shirt, because some of the trees upside down, I mean, how are they going to water those things?
No, that's the wagon's wheel, look.
Ah, see? Good answer.
So, he feels like he's on the beach, even though it just came from me.
Oh, so when you look down, he's like, oh, okay, gotcha.
All right, I have all my pictures.
So, you might, you may, in terms of our TV audience, want to start at the beginning, these folks might know what they're talking about, but they, I know that Bob at one point had talked about doing this, but it's been a while since there's been any discussion.
You said we might know what we're talking about, I prefer you to say they know what you're talking about.
I didn't say who they was.
Yeah, I know, and to an Italian, that's very exciting.
And that's not all, I just took power.
Do you have a...
Very type, various type of stones, whether you're going to have coarse, whether it's going to be smooth, the color scheme.
I grew up in Quincy, right, where all the monuments are carved, so this is like my backyard, literally.
There's a lot more than I thought it was.
It's amazing, isn't it?
But basically, what this is, is I've, I wanted to do a cremation wall, but I changed my mind when I started doing some investigation on different things and I found out a garden which you get double the arms or niches and you can make it look however you want to make it look, or you can have the companies design it. And I'd rather have us design it or myself, if you guys approve or disapprove, or we can work together and see what we can accomplish.
Do you have a location at the cemetery that you...
Just took a picture.
Okay. Oh, so this is the...
It's just one of, it's the back, you know, the corner.
Yes.
That's what it is, right, right in the section.
Okay.
And if you look this, this part there.
This is probably where the solar fountain is.
Yeah, but, yeah, this here, right here is the road.
Coming in.
Coming in.
From the town hall.
Right. No, from the...
From the back.
Town barn.
Yes, yeah.
Either that side or the side where the cemetery is going this way. And if I did that, I could fit two of these in there.
Oh, okay. Don't you think they'd be pretty popular?
Yes.
I think they...
I think so, because a lot more people are getting cremated.
Yes.
And I made sure, because some people want to be buried still in the ground.
Yes.
So, that's why I had on the outside, I can get double.
Oh, you have the option.
All the way on the outside.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's all different ways you can bury this one.
Yeah.
Instead of just in the wall.
Right.
Steve, if you had a chance, one, to kind of look and see what the projected fill-up rate, if you will.
No.
I mean, we still have, we still have capacity, I mean, we're not getting close to getting any kind of trouble, or are we?
Kind of, yes.
Kind of, yeah, well, that's what I was trying to bring up.
And that's what I was, I put on there, we could get four hundred and fifty arms buried in that little area compared to like fifteen to twenty regular areas.
Yeah, and it has become more acceptable and more routine.
Yeah, we're getting more and more of them. It's kind of, myself, I don't think it's right that we're selling a double-deep wall to an arm.
Yeah.
And that's what we've got left.
Yeah, I agree, that, that seems wasteful.
Right.
So, I, I love the concept, but I also like the ones that have, like, a family can actually buy.
Yeah, and that would be along the...
That would be like, so they have the flexibility, like, maybe you don't want to be next to somebody you don't know, and maybe you want to be with all your whole family.
You want a suite.
Exactly.
A suite.
Yeah, and instead of being on the wall, like, you're kind of on your own.
Right, and that's why I did the curtain like that, you can have one, two, four.
I don't know why I feel so uncomfortable talking.
I want a mausoleum.
It happens.
Can you make sure that you're not going to be put next to somebody, even if it's in your family that you don't like?
None of these guys.
This is like my business.
Why, you're going to put elevators?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
My dad calls me the professional morning.
Third floor, Kim.
It'd be like Redbox, you hit the button and the urn comes up, you get to take a look at it, goes back down again.
Or it's like, you know, oddly, like at Cisco, you can push the number and have an arm or robot in there.
Yeah, I agree with you, Quincy, so all the monuments are really carved there, so that, like, we have tons of, like, mausoleums and, you know.
And that's what some of these are like, and that's...
That's very disrespectful.
No, 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 it's a really kind of beautiful, like...
Right, and that's what I'm trying to show you, the different kinds of purchase.
I love it. I like, and I like this, like, I've, I've gone to a funeral where it's been a circular one.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, you can buy that, that's all pre-made and you can buy that for thirty thousand or whatever that is.
But in order to look good, like, should we have, like, all of the multiple, like, the, you don't care who you're next to, all look sort of the same and then leave the family section to be more unique?
Well, that's the good part about this, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah, do you think, like, the way that it would look, it would look more, sort of nicer and if it was just all the same, do you think?
Like, if you had a family on this side?
Yeah, like, if you had, like...
Singles overhead.
Where you're going to, yeah, where you're going to have, like, the singles should be all in the same sort of, and it all should look the same, uniformed. And then the family section can have the uniqueness of, I want a brownstone, which is like we do for regular stones.
You said the family ones like thirty thousand.
No, if you buy that pre, pre-designed one, that circular one.
The circular one.
Just to be clear, are you suggesting that families could buy their own or we would buy it?
Well, we, this would all be installed.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to be clear.
You buy a section or niches.
Yeah.
No, what are you saying, we pay thirty thousand?
No, no, I understand, I just wanted to make clear, am I correct in that?
If we bought this one.
For, for anybody listening there.
Did you, have you driven around at other cemeteries?
I've seen Duckspurds, I really haven't put them as time into it, because I didn't know what you...
Yeah.
The answer would be, and I'm not going to waste a lot of time if you guys don't want to. So, that's why I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
If for no other reason than your capacity.
But I have to draw around and check and...
Yeah, and I, I can too.
So, it's just, I didn't, like I said, I put quite a bit of time trying to figure out this stuff out.
No, it looks, it shows.
And then, I don't want to waste any time if it's not going to be accepted.
Other than over here, how many other cemeteries does the town own?
Just this, what we have.
Active.
Active.
That's the only one.
This is the only active one.
We almost had another one, but it failed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's the problem, we're running out of space and I figured this is a good way to...
Yeah, it's awesome.
Try to extend it, yeah.
And it's not about making money, but I figured out, if we just did half of the, half of the garden that I rented there, it would cost thirteen thousand dollars to buy all the niches and all the walls. And if we sold twenty-eight niches, it would pay for itself.
Oh, good.
So...
It works.
You know, it's, it's a lot of money for fixing the place up for the rest of the cemetery.
Right.
Yeah, and we're doing a service for the residents where there's a lot of people who would like to be buried in Halifax, but if we're running out of room.
No, they have an option.
Yeah, no, they have an option.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's worth pursuing. I agree.
So, do you want to take time and design it and sort of like drive it?
I'd love to. I'd like to put more time than doing just this, but...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you need any help, let me know.
The next time I come back, I'll have which one.
Yeah, but if you, if you guys don't mind, if you need any help.
Mine, I'd make a motion that you...
Yeah, like, yeah, I'd be happy to help, like, I don't want to tell you what to do, but if you want to just say thanks, bye.
No, I would rather have...
Yeah.
No, no, but I also, like, I go to cemeteries a lot, like, visit my grandparents' graves and like, so, I'll pay more attention, I'll pay more attention to how they have things set up.
No, she's not going to tell you what to do.
I'm married, man.
Yeah, yeah, she's not, she makes strong suggestions.
I know, it does seem a little weird that I'm excited about a cemetery project.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, you did an awesome job with...
I didn't mean to put all the paper up.
No, no, I like, no, I just did that.
Just different ideas to be set up.
This was great, like, I was looking at it thinking, oh, that would be really cool and, you know, how would that look, you know, yeah. And I think, like I said, to service the residents that want to stay in town, like, you know, there's no room in the end.
Right.
But now this is a potential...
Quite a bit more.
To have, you know, those options. And, and cremation is being, is definitely more popular, you know, besides the cost, certain churches are more accepting of it. I mean, years ago, there were some churches that didn't accept cremation.
I didn't know that until lately.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was a big issue, yeah, but now it's...
No, just go out where you came in, you know.
I'm just going to keep it with me.
The devil does, the burning god does the devil.
That was it?
Think about it.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Excellent, thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'll get ahold of you when I start doing my stuff.
Yeah, you're my help, yeah.
All right.
Awesome.
Thanks, Steve, awesome job.
Oh, and one more thing we'll have here. Can I bring up something else on the, the rules, regulations of, in the cemetery?
Yeah.
I'd like to make it so that everybody's on the same page, because we've had a couple complaints just since I've been here, because one of the guys will be mowing and he'll cut something and it's kind of in the way, which people are starting to get away from what the rules are, it's always supposed to be a foot.
It's supposed to be a foot, so away from the...
Right, so I'd like to make a couple of signs to go near the water circuit and everybody will see what the rules are.
Anything to say of aggravation.
Because it's, it's not fun when you get somebody yelling at you because something was done.
I put all these plantings out there and somebody came along and...
Right, so, if they have the rules, at least they can... So if they have the rules, at least they can...
As long as it's tasteful, I don't see any problem.
Well, that's the thing, as long as it's within reason. I mean, if the guy's on a lawn or getting a hook off the side of his head...
Oh, yeah, that's not good.
So...
Yeah, yeah.
But if I'm going to make any changes, I write them down and come to you guys, right? And see if you guys approve of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything within reason.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, good. Anybody else?
No.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Again, thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Have a good night, Steve.
Oh, so that was good. I know I can all...
Yeah, a little. New project.
You jumped right on that.
So random, isn't it?
Okay, let's, our next...
School project.
Eight thirty. There's no real update on that. Obviously, the roofing, for the most part, is done. There's a few areas around the chimneys, for the most part, that still need to be worked on.
So I happened to be in the building when the architect came in. I can't go to Wednesday's meeting, but I think that they're gonna, like, sit down and... They had some questions about painting of the hardy board, and I said, "That's something that, you know..."
The group as a whole.
Besides group as a whole, like, somebody like Tom, like, you know whether or not it should be painted? Like, I think they expected to have it made.
I was going to say, if they specked pre-finished, then they shouldn't be discussing painting it.
Well, that was the question, and you might want to talk to Rob, because you know I'm not the brightest bulb when it comes to this sort of construction thing, when it comes to the materials, because they made it sound like it was specked for being dipped, but also being painted, and that didn't make sense to me. So check with Rob.
Okay.
And then the other thing was, the aluminum, they had a lot of discussion about the aluminum around the windows and around the doors, and then he talked a little bit about the insulation when they do the fire suppression, where they're going to be moving the insulation. Right now, it's closer to the ceiling, they're going to be moving it up. So those are things to make sure that they talk to you guys about on Wednesday.
Yeah, so now the only thing they've got to complete on the roof is basically around the flash sheet around the chimneys?
Yeah, they're going to clad the chimneys, and then they have to tie in the roof.
Tie in the roof, right.
The chimneys look great, though, don't they?
Yeah, they do.
They look phenomenal. Even my husband said that. He went, "They look great." Thank you.
Well, they looked terrible for a long time. Those plywood faux chimneys never hold up well. Only first 20 minutes, they're installed, and then they deteriorate immediately.
Yep. We're on the home stretch, I don't see the lights there too late. But, and they were there on Saturday, they worked.
And the weather's been...
They've had terrible weather to contend with through the whole project, hurricanes and...
Yeah.
Not that we had storm damage, but certainly rain.
And they're definitely motivated to finish it. I mean, like, you know, if they miss a day during the week, and even if not, like, they're typically there on a Saturday, and they're doing it around the gym time, and so they've been super respectful.
I think Cape Boy's done a great job. I think they're great to work with. They've been very, very professional and cooperative.
So whether as part of the normal, every other week, meeting schedule we've been doing, or as a special meeting, I do want, I told Habib and Associates, I told Vertex, we need to have a sit-down to go over the next phase of the project, which are, as you mentioned, the windows, doors, the siding, and also the fire suppression system, because I'd rather have people asking questions and having that conversation early before any final decisions are made. I know that they're trying to finish the plans for the first three by the end of this month. And I don't want it so much etched in stone that we can't make changes based on that conversation.
Okay.
So, oh, keep your prize about any special meeting for that. Recycling grants, I think I mentioned this, what I street was $8,400, and what Susan's going to be doing, Susan Johnson over at the Recycling Center is going to be doing is a, let's see, they're getting a new compactor, and this would be for that, help fund that, plus any associated infrastructure, and also they're looking to get a new swap shed built there to replace the old one. So that's where that money's going for. I don't have any information more about the building, permanent 21 Plummer Street. I'm putting Nate coming in contact with Kim about the beautification project over at the Memorial Corner. I have to hear back from Chief Project about the floats on the pond. I haven't heard back from Lucy K C O Truck Exclusion. Zoning issues, I've not heard from anybody. We talked about all those issues a couple weeks ago. I've not heard back from anybody since then. And I'm, this is going to tie into a possible town meeting in November. We're, basically, we're almost running out of time if we're going to do any zoning issues at that November meeting. It requires the, you know, hearing with the planning board, which requires public notice at least a couple weeks in advance. They have a couple weeks before, after that hearing to make a recommendation. Basically, it's conceivable if everybody was on board, but I...
I don't see it happening.
Yeah, I mean, I heard on a particular issue, three or four different opinions on every single one of them. I'm not even sure, I'm not being upset with anybody, but I don't even know if the board as a whole, this board here is in support of anything in particular. They might be interested in talking about it, but I don't know if there's any one proposal on any of these issues that the board is unanimous about. And so I suspect what's going to happen is we're going to have to delay any action on any of these until May.
Actually, I think at this point, I know the planning board has taken it on to some degree, but I don't know that they've made a whole lot of progress. And to your point, by the time we discuss it ourselves, hold hearings and everything else, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. Doesn't make sense. But I think we're going to end up...
You want to wait until this ring to do it?
Well, yeah, I don't want to have a special town meeting on this issue, but if we were... I mean, my hope was, we might bring one or more of these topics to the meeting in November if everybody was on board for something, but I didn't see that from last two weeks ago.
I agree, and I think it's a lot of information.
It's been on the top of my list, I know that much.
And we don't want to rush into it. If we're going to change our monthly family bylaw, we need to do it thoughtfully.
Yes.
Because that's why we keep getting in trouble, because it was haphazardly put together.
Speaking of the town meeting, we will need one for the HOPS grant. The, it's a weird situation in that we need to have one before the end of the year, and it's going to be before even the grants are announced. So I, it's sort of a contingent motion at the town meeting that brings it up to date based on the HOPS grant that we might or might not get. But we have to have the meeting, and there has to be an article on there. There may be other things which I'll pull out of the file and go over with you in a couple weeks. Both John and Larry are available on November 20th, which is the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
They're not available the 13th, they would be available the 6th, but that's starting to put a little bit of a time bind on Barbara and everybody else to do whatever.
Well, it works out well, because I'll be returning on the 19th.
Okay.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so I'm going to do a special town meeting on the 20th.
I need to check with the school to confirm if space is going to be available and everything. But if the board would, doesn't have to do it tonight, well, I'll talk to you on a couple weeks, well, if you want to.
I'm going to motion that we set a special town meeting for Monday, November 20th at 7:30 at the elementary school pending the room being available.
And we haven't developed what issues we're...
No, aside for HOPS, I'll bring everything back to the board in a couple weeks to come up with a warrant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You name it.
On Potts upon, we did have a clean test over on West Side last week. My hope is the samples we're getting either yesterday or today will be similarly below the 70,000 number, and we'll maybe be able to reopen it. As much as it's been difficult this summer and into the fall, the actual numbers have been far lower than they were a year ago. It did have, the work we did do in the spring did have an effect. It just didn't have as much of an effect as we were hoping. It did bring the numbers down. We'll have to have a discussion, you know, later this fall about how to handle this.
Yeah.
We talked about the Eagle Scout projects. I know that Pam has a number of things to do with the recycling.
Would you like me to do the list?
Yep, okay, there's two pages, okay?
Yes.
First one you're just going to do, and then the second one is just all by itself, because we received a letter.
You know.
Okay, so I will make a motion for the first page as printed to abate, because these people have proven that their private hauler does recycling.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I will ask that we hold off on page two, or...
No. This is going to be contingent upon getting the application for the abatement. If the, if the board approves this tonight, and the applicant sends in the, or the resident sends in the application, we'll just have the board sign that you've already approved it.
Is there a date at which they need to send the application in by?
No, I didn't give it to them, but the thing is, if the board approves it, you'll have approved it by today.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve page two, bill number 96, contingent upon receiving an abatement form from the resident.
Second. All of you, David?
Aye, and then we're done with these?
It should be, yeah.
We are done.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted the board to vote on this tonight, contingent, so that we weren't still dealing with this topic two weeks from now.
Awesome.
I know Pam had, we had to rearrange the schedule tonight, because we had a postponement for one topic until next month. And I believe the representative from Morse Brothers is coming at 8:30. So if the board wants to take a break for five minutes and...
And sign?
Sign stuff, and we'll be off, you know, we can take the tape off for five minutes and re-start up again at 8:30, or when Mr. Representative comes in.
Number one, make it so.
Do I need to make a...
Beam me up Scotty.
Look it, we're going to keep them all in order.
That'll be the first time.
You know, I taught my kids how to drive in that cemetery. I knew where everybody is.
Well, that's where...
Of course you do.
That's one of the places where, I mean, not that I did it here, but that's one of the places where I taught Rebecca to drive. There's a big cemetery on North Main Street in Providence, just off 95. You can see it as you're driving north. And because there were intersections and things like that, I could tell her, "Make a turn here, stop here."
Yep, that's why I did it, and you can't kill anybody, really, now.
It worked out.
Are you giving me your check? You're so kind.
Yeah, you can have it. You know, I started her on empty parking lots, let her park the car.
Sure.
Just drive around, but then the next, yeah, the next...
Taught my kids over at the high school, the cousins had calls in fast around the traffic and stuff. And then I sent them to, sent them to a driving school, so, okay, now, now it says something different. Don't you pay attention to that.
I turned my kids loose at the mall.
Did you?
On a Sunday morning when there was no traffic. I said, "Just get, get the feel of the car, accelerate, brake."
Yeah, I did that in the town hall parking lot, and then they graduate to the cemetery. And then they graduated to Clyde O'Lothworth, that loop. And then they can only take a right out of that street, because that street is scary. Oh, my goodness.
My name is Long Jordan.
I am dog tired. It's a nice long weekend, huh?
Yeah.
I was kind of excited it rained a little bit.
Not me, I was driving on the ninety up at Charleston when the rain came through.
Oh, what a drain.
Doing 65 miles an hour, and the wind's blowing about 40, and it went down, so I'd slow down to 40 miles an hour, and a semi-trailer truck comes along by me, and a tractor trailer in the back end going. I says, "Okay," and I'm popping my brakes and hoping the guy behind me sees it.
Mark and I have to drive to Rochester, New York on Friday for Parents Weekend. Eight hours. It's seven hours, seven and a half full driving, but if you stop, it's eight.
Can you fly?
These mountains must be a little closer, right? I usually say six and a half from...
No, I wish.
...Oasis, Syracuse.
Yeah, well, this is, yeah. This is like, so actually, I have to remind Mark, I'm going to see if he'd mind leaving a little early on Friday morning at like 6:00 in the morning, because he's never seen Niagara Falls, and it's only about a half hour from Gabe's school. And no, it's like 40 minutes at most, but I did it.
Susquehanna hat company.
I did it with, when I looked at the College of Harrison, Harrison hadn't... I had taken the two younger boys to Niagara Falls, so I took them. But I usually fly into Buffalo. There are flights to Rochester, but I didn't make any reservations this time. We were just, Mark's like...
How full can it be?
Well...
You'd be surprised.
I mean, the problem with Syracuse was that they had the, they don't call it homecoming week or weekend, they call it something else. But that was this past weekend, and then Parents Weekend is this weekend. So Barbara and I went up the first weekend.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, the September, went up the first and came back on Monday.
Okay.
Because we don't want to deal with the hotels and everything else.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going up, I originally was just going to send Mark, so I don't want to get Marc's, but we're both going. So we're going to go up Friday morning, and I leave first thing Sunday morning. Gabe's in a competition, they did a, it's a first engineering class, it's a pumpkin throwing?
Yes. They want a trubac or whatever.
Yes, yes, whatever.
They use it to throw pianos and things like that.
Yes.
It's like, this is pumpkin.
Yes, and then I have tickets for Saturday night, Northeastern is playing, all right? So I guess they're Division One or...
I don't know.
Going up, we're in break.
Somebody was...
No, 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 it's a day.
It's 8:30. The stock out, yeah, we don't want you in there.
I'm going to, no, I can keep that, I'll let them know. And I... You ready, someone?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, we're back. It's 8:30, and our last scheduled appointment is with Brendan...
Mokwin.
Mokwin, okay, thank you very much for that, from Morse Brothers.
Correct.
And you're on. What are we here for?
Well, we were here because, yeah, because of the Lincoln Street...
Indian paths, or Indian paths, or something like that.
Buses.
Yes, so, quick update, the project should be over in four to six weeks. Bus schedule really wasn't even on the forefront for me, because I thought it was going to be done and completed during the summer. The contractor that I hired to perform the job pre-qualified the soil that was coming out of there for another job that I've extended, which ran to, as you can see with the sand, the trucking schedule. There was no activity during the summer months, and it just started ramping up the end of August and beginning of September when school came in session. So I coordinated with him, I said, "No Indian path that I was unaware of." I know he has GPSs on all of his trucks. He said he was monitoring that. As soon as Charlie talked to me, I phoned the contractor and vice versa. And then as far as the school buses, I had reached out and got the schedule off of Charlie that I then passed on to him, and that's about it.
We haven't had any complaints, anything posted or anything like that.
I haven't seen any coming down the road. I live in the area.
Okay.
So I've been watching, I was down to the day that the school bus was trying to get by and the truck was coming down, so... But as long as you're aware, but it's something to be done about, because it's important. The people in the neighborhood agreed to have this done, because they were going to follow certain rules and certain regs. You know, and Indian path was a part of the deal. It was a straight down Lincoln Street, whichever direction you're going to go from there.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, we just, at least for myself, I wanted to know somebody had a handle on it, and it sounds like you do. And that's what we were looking for, not to be punitive, just to make sure that everybody was playing by the rules.
Yeah.
And again, I understand you guys had scheduling issues, which changed the flow a little bit, but you got to live with what we got to live with.
No, absolutely, and my apologies, it's hard, it almost makes me a middle person as Charlie. And I'm not directly removing the material myself, so I'm glad to help.
I was a little spirited. I was a little spirited.
So you're saying by the end of November?
At the latest.
At the latest, it should be through with the project?
Absolutely, yes.
I appreciate that you came in, and I appreciate that you're on top of it. But I know personally, if the rule is broken again, that I would be calling the permit.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we made that pretty clear at the last meeting, that, you know, because it was multiple issues.
Yes, so I appreciate your attention to it, but that's how serious we are. We, there is no room for wiggle there.
Great.
Absolutely.
And I know you just provided a report through your engineer, your first report, so Pam has that, it's in the mail folder if someone needs it. Sorry, Troy. That's okay.
I was going to say, but thank you again for coming in.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your attention to the situation.
I have another copy if you guys would like that.
We've got a radio.
That's your job.
Thank you.
It's heavy.
Try not to miss anything.
Yeah.
I guess.
Well, we're good. Okay, thank you, Brendan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was super quick.
Yeah, I think that's everything, right? All right, that's it. Good night, everybody.
I made a motion that we...
Good night, Mr. Calabash, wherever you are.
You got a second? You got a second now?
Mr. Calabash, second.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You name it.
Good night.